All right, the computer says it's 3:01. The clock says it's 2:59, so we'll split the difference and start. Good afternoon and welcome to the October 28, 2025 Salinas City Council meeting. The meeting is now called to order. Patty?
This meeting is available in Spanish for members of the public in attendance and on Zoom. Translation devices can be obtained at the foyer. Esta reunión está disponible en español para los miembros del público y en Zoom. Las unidades de traducción se pueden obtener en la entrada de la rotunda.
Zoom webinar participation is available for members of the public. The Zoom webinar ID and link are available on the posted agenda on the city website. And let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody from the public who wants to comment on the closed session items?
Mayor, roll call first.
Oops, do that first. You didn't, there was nothing underlying.
Roll call. Thank you. Councilmember Barajas?
Present.
Councilmember Barrera?
Here.
Councilmember DiRigo?
Present.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Present.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Here.
Mayor Donahue?
I am here. All right. With that, we are going to head into closed session. Before we do, are there any public communications? All right, we're going to go in and...
Mayor, we have one on Zoom.
We do, all right? Very good. Okay, Catherine, go ahead, please.
I thank you, and I just want to say something. You guys should not start my time because I was on last meeting and you guys ignored me talking. It's proven. We have it on Zoom. So I don't appreciate you muting me the last time I called in. We have some big corruption inside the city of Salinas. For one, is that one of our city hall members is not disclosing her loans from pardoned drug trafficker David Drew and used to buy her Los Larelas property. The same property...
Catherine, this is a public comment in reference to the closed session matter.
Okay, so when is the general public comment?
General public comment will be at 4 o'clock.
All right.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing no other hands, we will go ahead and proceed into closed session and do a public employee performance evaluation. We will be back at 4 o'clock. All right, good afternoon. We're going to go ahead and get started. There's nothing to report out from closed session. With that, we will open general public comment on items that are not on the agenda and that are in the city of Salinas's subject matter jurisdiction. Comments on consideration, public hearing items, and the consent agenda should be held until the items are reached. Public comments are generally limited to two minutes per speaker, and that's what we will do this evening. And with that, we are open for public comment.
Mayor, very quickly, if I might also add, if the record could reflect that Councilmember Sandoval is not back at 4:05 PM, the DIAS to take a call.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Good after eve, everyone. My name is Kimberly Bryant, and I am here to pray for the city of Salinas. But specifically tonight, I will be praying for Chinatown, which I affectionately call Glory Town, and I spend a lot of time there. Heavenly Father, I ask for your mercy and your grace. I'm devastated by what I witness when I am in Chinatown. I'm devastated by the lives I'm seeing. People are barely existing, and they are barely existing in a hellscape. It's not just in Chinatown, it's all over our city, Lord. What we are doing is not working. We are not moving the needle with our welfare programs. Father, what we need is your love and power. I would ask, Lord, that you would move a glory cloud over Chinatown. Father, that rivers of living water would pour out across Solidad Street, that it would meet onto Main Street, onto Market Street, onto Sherwood Drive, that it would go east, west, north, and south and cover our city, Lord, in living water. Your love, your glory. Your people need healing, Lord. They need deliverance. They need a purpose. And Father, you are the only one that can break the yoke off of them. So Father, I ask that you come, that you come and you revive your children. Amen. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Okay. Good afternoon, Montebella community. I just want to thank the following people for showing up to our meeting. Mr. Donahue, Mr. Barajas, Mr. Barrera. Gloria, your husband was there, God bless him. Yolanda, I think Peter was there, and I forgot the other gentleman's name. The police department also showed up, it was great. Also Ariana from Public Works gave a great presentation, which is what people in the city need is more transparency. And I think it's working what we're doing. And next meeting, I want to get code enforcement and maybe the Parks and Recs personnel there so we can get more information, so people can be very uplifting and ready to work with you guys. That's what we want to do. So I've been watching the news and a lot of negative information distributed between politicians, people, the cities, counties, districts, and states that have bombarded negativity. I believe we can change all that in Salinas. I believe we don't want to be like those other cities in the news these days, being negative with everything. Let's try to be positive. And the problem is that we need to focus on not being negative. See, in Montebella, we have great people that are very, very focused on positive things to do, but they're angry because they pay a lot of taxes, and we don't see anything coming from that. And after the meeting, I was pulled aside and I was told that. You know, we pay a lot of taxes for them to be building stuff everywhere else but here. We used to have a surplus in our unit at Montebella. We should use that surplus you collect there for our Montebella, you know, community only. I believe that's what we should do. And, you know, everybody, just be respectful. We had a great meeting, nobody got out of hand. And people that did, I called them out very politely, and I let them speak their mind, and it really worked. So thank you all for coming, and I appreciate all of you up here, and God bless you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I was talking to a gentleman before I came in here, and I was looking over the plan out there off of Natividad for the soccer center there and the amazing work that's going on out there. And I think of so many opportunities around our city to engage with our community and make a better cultural lifestyle for everybody. But I think that there's roadblocks when it comes to our city being able to focus on these important items that will truly make our city great and separate us and be that great city that we can be. And I see, like, all the energy going into rent control, for instance. You know, and we got the circus clown posts here that police are pounding doors down to verify signatures, which I think is a complete lie, Andrew. I think it's, again, pointed towards being negative here. And I see this big push at rent control going after our local homeowners directly that have worked their whole lives in this rent control thing. Yet you let PG&E skate that's bankrupting us. Why don't you go after them, Andrew? You want to go after corruption? Look at the security of our major events and the people running them. You look at dirty cops like Kelly McMillan and Bob Eggers that couldn't find a horse with both their hands, you know, and they're running the Rodeo. Why don't you take a look at that? The security that they provide there and these homeless people that are volunteering, getting rubber stamp certifications, not checking security. A very big potential problem that we have in our city. You want to look at corruption? Dig into those two guys, you'll find it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Here I am again, Gablin Creek. I just want to let you know, I'm not a bad person. I'm a very positive person. I'm compassionate about my city. I love my city. And you're not doing anything to help us out. That creek was given to us by the Sherwood family. You need to take responsibility that you are running that creek. I'm not getting signatures. The number of people that told us, oh, we had a meeting with the mayor and some city council officials, and they said they weren't responsible for the creek. Salinas is responsible for Gablin Creek. I don't know what nefarious work is being done there, but there is something very fishy going on with the Gablin Creek and why it hasn't been cleaned up. You talk about the homeless. You talk about the homeless. Seventy-eight point seven million from 2020 to 2025, and we still can't get rid of 30 people in a creek? I know you have a lot of responsibility, and we appreciate what you do, but this is very important for the residents of Creek Bridge. Excuse me, but I'm not apologizing because I cry, because I'm emotional. I apologize because I'm saddened because you don't do anything about the creek. I went down to the creek with KSPW last night. There was a toilet there. There was two five-gallon buckets of poop just sitting there. What are they going to do? They're eventually going to throw it back into the creek, two gallons of poop. Do I need to contact the EPA? Are you listening to me of what's going on in the creek? That it's dangerous, that you don't allow the police to go in there yet? We live right across from the creek. What are you doing? What are you doing to us? Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Okay. Anyone else from the public?
Mayor Donahue, members of the council, I'm Frank Saunders, downtown property owner. I'm, like this lady, I'm very concerned about the homeless situation in this city. It is out of control, and there doesn't seem to be anything positive being done about it. So I don't know what it's going to take, but we definitely need a shelter because you can't tell these people to get out of the public areas if there's no shelter for them to go to. We know that, the Boise law brought that up. So why don't we start by getting a shelter put together? I mean, it seems like the number-one requirement to get the homeless people put back in a place where they can get help, they can't use drugs. I mean, half of these people, probably 80%, are on drugs. The rest are alcohol or have mental issues. They need help, and we're not getting the help. They're starting fires all over the place. Gablin Creek is a perfect example of what they do. They're right across the street from the downtown. You got them in the library, Steinbeck Library, they're there every single day. Would you like to bring your kid into the Steinbeck Library when you got a bunch of goons sitting out there? I mean, I realize they're human beings, but they are not good for the young people of our area. And the school, all the people from the school walk right through there on their way past City Hall. I mean, where do we start? Got to start somewhere. If it isn't a shelter, I don't know where, but I think a shelter would be number one. You look at Fort Ord, they've got, when COVID came, they put up these giant tents. We could do the same thing in this town. We got to find a location, maybe the location out there by the county homeless center that we have now. There's five acres there. You can get a lot of people in five acres. It's right next to the medical centers, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Frank. Okay, anyone else from the public? All right, is there any public comment on Zoom? There is. Wes?
Yes, sir, thank you. Wes Wise, Salinas, Monterey County Homeless Union co-president. You know, I've been working on this over 10 years, and you're talking about this homeless issue. When we had shelter in place, it was a lot better because we had porta-potties and hand washing stations. We also had dumpsters. You also need kitchen, laundry, showers. You know, where people are at is a process of elimination. It was never their first choice, it's their latest choice. So, I mean, we don't respect people off the top. Do you want to be authoritative, or are you just too complacent being authoritarian? Misspending money, you know, that people are saying, well, no. We need to give people 400 square feet and a structure. Power stations, you know, power and shower really does wonders for a person's mental stability and physical health, if health and safety is really our real issue. What you need to do, if it's just hitting ground, you need to pass them over. If you reward positive behavior, everyone else would fall in line with that because that's the way to go, that's the way to fly, and everyone would feel healthy, happy. Like, just give some people some space, you know? I mean, they need to be somewhere, unless you're trying to kill them, which obviously, over the last 10 years, over 200 people, my friends' friends, have passed away living outside, waiting for services to rescue them, but only facing daily harassment and theft by police, Public Works, their contractors, profiteering pirates, man, sheriffs of Nottingham, pickpockets. In the casino of this culture, the jurisdictions and its payees are entitled to all people's bulk personal property if one is found not to have a lease because obviously, they shouldn't be there. Mercenaries, man, cops who are robbers. They stop the sweeps and actually treat people right. They're United States citizens, man.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And I will proceed to a presentation to the council from TMC.
Good afternoon, Mayor Donahue and members of the council. My name's Todd Muck. I'm the executive director at the Transportation Agency for Monterey County. And because it's been quite a while since TMC has presented to the city, I just wanted to kick off with a brief overview of TMC and then Christina Watson, our director of planning, to do the presentation on the rail project. In the Transportation Agency is a regional transportation planning agency. It's a state designation. We have board of directors, which is one representative from each of the 12 cities, including Andrew Sandoval, representing the city, and Margaret DiRigo is your alternate. And we have all five county board supervisors, representatives, ex-officios from Caltrans, Monterey Salinas Transit, CSUMB, and others as part of a body that can look at regional transportation planning and assist jurisdictions on their goals. Our mission is to develop and maintain a multimodal transportation system that's working with all of you to meet your goals for mobility and access in your communities. And our role is multifaceted on a range of modes, anywhere from highways, such as the 101 South of Salinas Project that we're working with Caltrans on right now, rail, which will do the presentation today, local streets and roads, primarily through Measure X, which is the 3/8 sales tax that TMC administers, and 60% goes to the cities and the county for local streets and roads. We also help with bicycle pedestrian projects and safe routes of schools and assisting the city of Salinas and other jurisdictions on your applications for state funds, helping to match those and helping to deliver those projects. And then we facilitate wherever is needed on helping delivering projects. So whether we're the lead agency on a project, we might be in that position for a small jurisdiction or just in a supporting role for a more developed city like Salinas. We just want to be there for the jurisdictions to help them meet your goals. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Christina, and she'll talk about our rail program. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Christina Watson, director of planning at TMC. A few weeks ago, this body approved the extension of the memorandum of understanding between the three entities, Salinas, TMC, and Monterey Salinas Transit, to extend the agreement another 10 years. We have been coordinating on this project for over 20 years at this point and are excited to continue to see progress on it as we move forward. So the benefits of rail to a community are to provide an alternative to the automobile as the best way to reduce our carbon footprint on the transportation sector. And rail service will provide greater accessibility to the Silicon Valley, San Francisco Bay Area, and beyond for all travelers, whether they're accessing jobs or healthcare or education. One of the projects we are coordinating with the state on is to close the gap in rail service on the central coast in state-supported inner-city rail service. TMC is a founding member of the Coast Rail Coordinating Council that was established in 1992 with the mission to improve the frequency, speed, reliability, and ease of use of passenger rail service on the coast route between San Francisco and Los Angeles. And we're focused on the gap between Gilroy and San Luis Obispo in state-supported rail service. Last year, the Coast Rail Coordinating Council secured a critical state infrastructure grant to implement various improvements along the corridor in order to make it possible to have additional rail service on the corridor. We are also supporting the work of the Caltrans Division of Rail and Union Pacific Railroad to implement positive train control, crash avoidance safety technology on the corridor. And we are working with Caltrans and the Federal Railroad Administration, known as the FRA, to move the program of projects through the Corridor Identification and Development Federal Funding Pipeline. And the service provider on this project would be the Capital Corridor train that currently goes between San Jose and Sacramento. There are seven trains a day currently coming into San Jose, so it would be extending one of those trains down to Salinas in the near term, working with Capital Corridor, Union Pacific, and Caltrans to extend it to San Luis Obispo in the long run as the equipment allows and as the infrastructure improvements are implemented. The other project that we have been working on for quite a long time, maybe not quite since 1992, but pretty close, is an extension of Caltrain service from the Bay Area down to Salinas. So this slide, I'm afraid of touching the button, is the green button, the pointer? Let's try it, yes. So the Caltrain corridor goes from San Francisco to San Jose. That's the corridor that was electrified about a year ago. They have very frequent service in that section of the corridor. They have four trains a day now going south from San Jose down to Gilroy on the Union Pacific-owned mainline tracks. And those are the trains we're looking to extend down to Salinas, which is a 38-mile extension on existing Union Pacific-owned tracks. And it would be, at the start of service, two round trips on weekdays only. And the next step in the project after we get that service started is establishing new stations at Pahrula-Watsonville, which is currently going through the environmental review process, and then the Casterville Station, which would be the linkage with the Monterey Branch Line once we have funding secured for those projects. So progress to date includes the construction of the Lincoln Avenue extension across Market Street, which is a major reconfiguration of the existing station area, allowing safe road access for cars, buses, bikes into the existing train station in your downtown. And it included the safe pedestrian crossing at the forefront of this image here. And you can see the Greyhound bus in the middle of the intersection. Maybe that's Amtrak, it's hard to tell. This is an actual drone photo, not a rendering. And so the bus bays are close to the station up here. There's five bus bays that are used by Greyhound, Amtrak throughway buses, Monterey Salinas Transit, school buses, and occasionally a tour bus that will come in and visit the Rail Museum and the Harvey Baker House there. So the next part of the project is to put in a train layover facility about west of the station. Railroad north is the terminology they use, but it's technically west, along Market Street. So you can see this is the downtown train station here at Main and Lincoln, and then the layover facility would be there. And we would be accessing, the trains would be accessing the platform on the other side of the platform from where the Coast Starlight currently stops. The Coast Starlight stops on the mainline track right on the platform there. It's a very long platform, and it's currently going into construction to upgrade the platform by Amtrak this winter. But our part of the project is to install that station track and then the train layover facility, which I have a close-up of in the next slide. And you can see, we were expecting six layover tracks for the full build-out scenario of having a very robust train service at the station. In the near term, that wouldn't be necessary, but the state gave us a grant to build for the big picture, the long-term scenario, so that we don't have to go back and make improvements later while it's in operations. And the blue lines indicate the new track, the black lines indicate existing track. And then there's a few parking spaces for the crew that will be working in the maintenance facility here. It's just a light maintenance, not a full maintenance facility. And there's a storage shed for any kind of things that they would need in a crew base building with some desks. And then the third phase of work for the project is to connect the track at the Gilroy Station, which is the end of the line for Caltrain. So currently today, Caltrain trains stop at Gilroy and cannot actually proceed further south. So the black, again, is the existing, and the blue is our proposed track connection to the mainline to enable Caltrain to continue south from Gilroy. And that will also enable other trains, such as the Amtrak Coast Starlight or the Capital Corridor train, to stop at the Gilroy Station and pick up and drop off passengers there. It is also the site of the future planned high-speed rail station on the other side of the layover facility over here. So that would be, once that's constructed, a pretty easy connection over to the high-speed rail system. And recent progress on the project. We have been coordinating with Union Pacific on design review. We just resubmitted the Gilroy 25% plans to Union Pacific, and they are looking at them now. Union Pacific approved our 25% plans for the layover facility, and we held a site visit on May 14, I think, in the middle of May. And so the next steps after this are to put together a site visit at Gilroy once they've reviewed the 25% plans and given us the green light to do that, initiate negotiations with Union Pacific about the use of their track in terms of easements and temporary construction easements and encroachment options, and then develop a C and M agreement, maintenance agreement, with Union Pacific and an operations agreement with Caltrain. And that is the end of my presentation, and we are happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll start. So we will take questions from council and then proceed with the rest of the agenda. Margaret, any questions?
Thank you, Christina. A couple of quick questions, and Todd, thank you both. I know that negotiations with Union Pacific have been challenging. It sounds like things are moving forward in a positive manner. Would you agree with that statement, that they're coming to the table and things are moving forward?
Yes, we have had positive progress.
Okay, great. And then can you give us an idea of what kind of investment we're talking about? Even like something as simple as like a track connection from Gilroy? Like, what kind of dollars are we talking about in terms of investment?
That is excellent question.
And it could be general, I'm not going to hold you to a number.
Yeah, the total project budget is $86 million, but that includes all of the pre-construction work as well. Our website and our flyers do actually have the estimated cost for the Gilroy track connections, but I don't have it memorized.
No, that's totally fine. I just wanted to kind of give the community an idea of, you know, how important this is, the huge investment that we're putting in. And I, you know, I support it 100%. I think it's fantastic. It'll be really great for Salinas and for the entire state of California. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and just to note, those dollars are state funds that are specified just for this project. So it's a unique example of where we were able to leverage outside funds to bring it to our community.
Gloria?
Thank you for the presentation, and I know we have talked about this for years. So now, are we almost getting close to this? When is it projected?
Yeah, it's always...
Yeah, it's always a little bit dangerous to estimate time of operations because there are so many other hurdles that we still need to overcome, but we are making progress with Union Pacific, we are making progress with the state and Caltrain to begin operations. Hopefully, in 2028. The other project, the project of extending Capital Corridor service could happen sooner because they are working to establish what might have to happen for them to operate as the Coast Starlight operates today. So, that could happen as soon as 2027, if everything falls into alignment as we anticipate.
Thank you.
Really?
My questions are regarding rail and where we're at with rail. Whenever I see the conversation come up regarding rail, like many people, I think about, you know, the old, the old trains, and the last couple of years when I've had the opportunity to travel to like the Fresno area, there's that, the big light rail project that was going on, just remember seeing those rails, maybe like five, seven stories high, and then one year, like it came to a screeching halt. So, I know that there's like this big funding issue when trying to bring like light rail to communities. Where are we at regionally regarding like rail? Is it something that we may see in the next five years or 20 years? Is it a conversation that TMC and the TMC Board is having? Is there an official or unofficial position where we're at regarding rail or projects such as like light speed rails? And what would that look like?
So, I want to clarify something. I think you're maybe referring to the high-speed rail project in the Central Valley?
Yes.
So, okay, so the nearest station for us would be the Gilroy Station to connect to the high-speed rail project, so it doesn't actually come through Monterey County, but we would be able to access it through these projects I was just mentioning. We'd be able to board that train if it is constructed, but yes, it is facing financial issues right now.
So, just the Central Valley component of the high-speed rail is facing severe financial issues. Future service to Gilroy is quite a ways out, so our services is really positioned as an alternative that can be done in a very short period of time using the existing rail facilities. So, what we're talking about, the extension of Capital Corridor train to Salinas and then down to San Luis Obispo, the extension of Caltrain from Gilroy down to Salinas are all near-term and can use existing rails and existing trains to operate. And those are the two extensions that we're working to do the capital improvements required for them to start implementation. And again, the reason why we are a little vague on the schedule is because Union Pacific is the main, they're owner, they're the owner of the rail corridor through the central coast, and they're just slow to respond, and in other ways, this isn't their main priority. But as we've worked through the years with them, they are being more responsive now than they have in the past, so we want to, we want to build on that.
Thank you.
Andrew?
Well, Todd kind of answered the question. The majority of the funds, a lot of these rail projects come from the state agency, and how's the outlook for the state in continuing to fund some of these projects?
So, we have the funding committed to the project to build the layover facility in Salinas and the Gilroy track extension, so the trains can go south from the Gilroy Station. Other funds are required, but until we get through the whole design process, we won't know exactly how much that is. There are different pots of monies, money at the, transportation money at the state and national level are kind of in silos, so some's, so while there are difficulties with the state budget, there are, that doesn't necessarily translate to all of the transportation funds that are out there. When we get farther along, we'll be able to apply for specific grants to make up any gaps that there could be. But right now, we can build the two projects that we're talking about with the existing funds. An example would be, King City is looking to add a train stop for Coast Starlight, and we worked with our partnership at the Coast Rail Coordinating Council, we, the council got a $66 million grant for, I think, three projects, including $25 million for the King City Station. So, that's a specific pot of money from the state that's still accessible for other future rail projects.
Right, and I think in one of the slides, it showed like a, right, a 25% review. Can you speak a little bit about, I know it doesn't seem like a whole lot, but, you know, what's next from the 25% review? What's the next level?
Yeah, yeah, so for Union Pacific, their design review goes through a very specific process with their engineering team, and 25% is a major milestone, so we were really excited to have that 25% walkthrough here at Salinas, and we're looking forward to being able to do that in Gilroy in the near future. And then, it will go to 30%, and then, for some reason, goes to 90%, and then it goes to 100%. So, I don't, I can't explain it, but that's the UP process.
And the design review with the city is actually already at 100%?
Yes.
So, we're really talking about getting Union Pacific up to the level of, with the review with the city.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, and thank you for being here. I want to focus on neighborhoods. I know your, the role of TMC, not only do you deal with rail, but tell us a little bit about the bicycle pedestrian projects that you, any that you've worked on here or had anything to do with here in Salinas.
Our role is more of a support role for the city when you talk about bicycle pedestrian projects. There's the, like, as I mentioned, the Measure X funds that goes to the city, that the city has complete discretion on how to spend, but we have coordinated on application for state active transportation grants. When you look at the Barden roundabouts in front of Barden Elementary, that had some TMC funds, has contributed to match to the active transportation grant. There, I believe, are four or five that are active right now that have a component where TMC is a partner with the city doing, we combined in the grant application multiple components, and one part of this is what's called non-infrastructure, where there's an education component, and that allows training and education for the students and families about how to safely utilize streets and roads to get to school. And that allows, not only that has the benefit of that education, but it also created, made those grant applications more competitive and allowed them to get funded. So, you fund the physical improvements that are associated with it, but also that education. We've done the walk-in rolls to schools and the sidewalk artwork that's associated with that as ways of encouraging active transportation, walking to school. So, there's a range of ways that we're supporting the city for bikes and pedestrians.
Yeah, let me ask you, along with the funding, who says this is the way we want you to do the bicycle pedestrian walk? Who's the one that, let me just be more precise on this. We're making bicycle lanes, but we're building them in a certain way where the street sweeper can't even get in there to clean the curb, so, so I guess my question is, why are we doing that? I mean, it looks great, but when it comes to the practical daily cleanup, the street sweeper can't get in there because of the design of the bicycle lanes.
I'm, I don't know specifically the location you're talking about, but what I think you're referring to is, is best practices now are for bike lanes to be protected, so there'd be some level of separation between the automobile traffic and bicycle traffic, and the best separation is a physical barrier, either delineators or some level of a bollard that separates the traffic from the bicycles. And that can create a difficulty in sweeping because of the width of the bike lane. That's a difficult issue. Other jurisdictions are purchasing small street sweepers that go through that smaller width. That's the type of thing you can get a grant from the Air District for an electric street sweeper as a way to address that. But it is known as a fact that that separation between automobiles and bikes create a safer environment and it results in less injuries and fatalities.
You know, and I appreciate what you're saying, a safer environment, but as I'm one that rides my bicycle, once you're on the bicycle lane, there's glass and there's a lot of debris, so it's very unsafe. So, I'll go to my next question. As far as local roads, because you know what, we can, we can talk about rail, which is needed, but there's one council member who's more in the neighborhood, so what's practical is, as far as the partnership, I guess I'm looking at the design, because sometimes once the project is done, whether it's local roads, bicycle lanes, it looks fantastic, but then on the practical sense, once you start using them, you find out, hey, we forgot to do this, or, so, so how does the partnership come on the planning to make it effective for use?
Well, the design is, does come down to the city's final say-so on how a product is designed. We do encourage best practices and that are things like the protected intersection and reducing the distance that a pedestrian has to cross the street, limiting slip lanes on right turns, so cars are not put in a position where they can't see a pedestrian crossing, and different ways that you're trying to reduce injuries and fatalities. There are ideas like doing what's called a quick build, where you do a rather quick implementation of projects and then evaluate it before you do the final version of it. There are some different strategies to evaluate a design before it becomes, before you do things that are permanent, more like street curb and gutter modifications. So, that is something that we're talking with our technical advisory committee right now. We have representatives from each of the cities and on our technical advisory committee. We do a cycle of funding that the next cycle comes up next year, and things like a quick build program is one of the, one of the ways that we're talking about to address that.
Yeah. Makes a lot of sense. Just one more question. You know, in front of this building, I don't know if you're aware of our parking situation, what's the strategy there on that type of parking?
So, the reverse diagonal parking, the strategy behind that is, it's easier to park backwards into a reverse diagonal as you pull up, and you can look at it as you're coming up to park and then back into it, versus when you're backing out, when you're leaving. So, with the reverse diagonal, you can drive forward and you can see around you if there's a bicyclist or another car. It's easier to see when you've backed into the parking spot as you exit, it's easier to see. So, that's the strategy of a reverse diagonal parking. It's safer than the traditional diagonal parking.
Okay, thank you. Jose?
Thank you, Mayor. A few questions. So, in one of the slides, you mentioned being around 25% through with the review process. Mentioned that you're working with Union Pacific, Caltrain, Coast Starlight, Capital Corridor, awesome. However, we heard earlier, and you all were here during public comment, one of the biggest issues we're dealing with right now is the homelessness issue, and recently, Salinas made headlines for having a homeless individual die on the tracks. So, as part of your conversations with Union Pacific and all these other entities, what in that planning process is being included to help mitigate some of that? Because when I would take the Caltrain up in San Jose to San Francisco, there are no homeless encampments along those trails. So, what are they going to do to make sure that we have that same level of quality of service here as well?
It is not really part of our project, but I know that the city has been coordinating with Union Pacific for many years on trying to mitigate that, and when we did the walkthrough, we did see that there were, I'm not sure what the word for it is, but there were obstructions placed in the Union Pacific right-of-way along the city fencing, so, yeah, I don't really have an answer for this question. It's not really part of our project.
It is outside of our scope, but having more train service activating the area gets more eyes on to that part of the town.
Is rail safety not part of the scope of TMC, then?
So, there's the initiation of service and the construction, and then there's the operation of service, and will, the operator will, in the scenarios that we talked about, will be the Capital Corridor and Caltrain, and each of those have active, that issue comes up when they're operating. So, that's kind of a feature step in this process, and it's not an area that we're particularly focused in, it's not our area of expertise.
Okay. Well, I hope you all will consider that as you move forward. It may not be your area of expertise, but it's definitely an area of concern for Salinas residents, right? We see it day in and day out. Whenever we're going across Sanborn Road, we look to our left down to the south, the Southern Railroad, there's encampments there. You look to the right, there's encampments there. You go to the Intermodal Station, just look across the bridge, there's a whole slew of encampments there. The chain that's protecting the railroads is open left and right, right? So, I think it should be more top of mind than, you know, something that we're putting on the back burner, waiting to see who raises their hand and says, I'll take responsibility for it. It may not be your responsibility, but I feel that it is under TMC's obligation and responsibility to be that advocate, to bring that conversation forward.
We certainly can be part of the voices on that issue, but there has been a lot of communication with the city and the, and Union Pacific as the owner of the right-of-way, and that has to be the first priority, first group talking about that issue. We can just advocate kind of in addition to that.
Awesome. But hopefully, we integrate it as part of the planning process itself, right? It's very important. It's, what doesn't get written, doesn't get done, and I would like to see something more concrete and explicit written into whatever agreements we end up entering for operational purposes for these tracks. Follow-up question, does TMC have some sort of body where you specifically discuss rail issues?
Yes, we have a subset of the TMC Board is the Rail Policy Committee. It meets 10 times a year, and it's open to the public, and the agendas are available on the website.
Okay. And then, does Salinas have any representation on that committee?
Yes.
Okay. Who is the representative on that committee?
Councilmember Sandoval is your representative.
Awesome. Thank you for answering that. And what is his attendance record for this calendar year?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
What's Councilmember Sandoval's attendance record to the Rail Policy Committee for calendar year 25?
So, all of our agendas with minutes are on our website, so you can, you can check that. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Awesome. That's, he missed two out of the six meetings, so he missed a third of the meetings this calendar year so far. Do you happen to know his attendance record for calendar year 24?
I do not, but that is available on our website.
Thank you for that. I did check the website, and he missed four out of seven meetings, right? So, if we do that quick math, that means he attended seven out of 13 meetings in the last two years, and he missed six out of 13 meetings in the last two years. From your perspective as an agency, is that effective representation from constituents from that respective agency?
I don't think that's honestly a very appropriate question to ask us. That's a discussion for your council. We're, and we're always available to work with the city, but our meetings are public, so any other council members will come to come and attend and participate.
But any other member of the public, whether it's myself that attends that Rail Policy Committee, is not attending as a representative on the body itself. We are attending as a member of the public, right? So, we are no longer part of the decision-making process. We are a part of the public comment, the public engagement process, but we are no longer the decision-maker. The decision-makers are the appointees to that body.
True, and it's an advisory committee to the board.
Awesome. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, the only clarification is that Councilmember DeRigo is...
I'm sorry, I'm asking my questions, sorry, Councilmember Sandoval, I'm asking my questions, I have to play this time.
I understand that.
Thank you for that. Are there any other city representatives to the Rail Policy Committee who have similar attendance track records?
Honestly, I don't keep track directly for individual members, so we would have to investigate that question.
And it is marked in the minutes of every meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you for that answer. I just find it a little bit difficult to say that you don't, you don't remember, but I think I would remember not seeing a representative half the time when they're supposed to be in a meeting, right? If any of us didn't go to meetings half the time, I don't think any of us would have a job, right? That's all my comments.
All right. Just, as you know, when asked on the rail, because we've had this conversation before, and I will admit from the front end, it's a lame joke, so just to kind of bring all this to conclusion, when last I left it, the train would be here in 2014. Just, could you just...
Mayor, your mic, please.
Sorry. When last I left it, the train was going to be here in 2014. When last I left it, the train was going to be here in 2014. This was, this was a good presentation and I appreciate, just, just to kind of bring everything to a closure, why there, could you just kind of restate the fact that, you know, 25% activity, there is action, things are in motion. So why the community now should feel optimistic that within the next two or three years, we're going to see some sort of rail, rail service to, to the city? You know, what's the difference between today and yesterday?
Yes, well, we, we did construct the improvements at the Salinas train station in that, in that period. And the other segments of the project are all subject to Union Pacific review. And so the fact that we have gotten to 25% is a significant milestone for their process. And if they do review according to the schedule that our design team has developed, we could get into construction and put out bid documents next winter. So winter of, December of 2026.
But there needs to be, because I understand that there needs to be a decision made. Because you're, you're basically saying it's not either or, Cal Corridor or Caltrain. It could be, it could be both, but what, what triggers their, their commitment to their coming?
Right, so that's, it's actually two separate projects. So, yeah, so the Capitol Corridor trigger has to do with the Positive Train Control Project, which is a state-led project. So that is something that Caltrans, Division of Rail is coordinating with Union Pacific. We have high hopes. That is a fully funded project. We hope that will go into construction in the near future, probably 2026, but earlier than ours. And the other one, the Caltrain Extension, we are coordinating with them. They want us to coordinate with Union Pacific first before we can discuss an operating agreement with Caltrain. But we have a lot of milestones we're, we're aiming for in the near future.
No, this isn't a fair question, but if you were a betting person, would you bet it will be here with, one or the other will be here within a couple of years?
I am not a betting person.
You're not a betting person. Why can safely bet on 2014? It didn't happen.
Yeah, we work on a whole range of projects and I unfortunately have to say rail is the hardest because we have the least control over, over the situation. And, and that's very frustrating and I appreciate your frustration. But having worked on it for quite a while now, I think we're as, as good a position now as we've been in quite a while. So that's all I can offer.
Great. Well, that's good to hear. All right. Well, terrific. Thank you for your time. And with that, we will proceed to the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Calendar. All right, matters listed under the consent agenda may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the council requests a separate vote or discussion. Members of the public may comment on the consent agenda items collectively during their public comment. Would any council member like a separate vote or discussion on any of the consent items?
Mayor, I apologize. I, I did have a comment after the, the presentation. I don't know if I'm out of order or.
Not really out, really out of, out of order. Did I, did I miss something?
You missed, you missed Councilmember Barrera and Sandoval.
Yeah, no, go ahead then.
I'm going to ask our Assistant City Manager. I think as we go along, because these, these bicycle lanes are great, but you know, we really need to think the way we're doing them because we're creating, we're doing something right, but then we're creating a problem. We have to figure out a way how to be able to get the street sweeper in there. If you look, if you look at East Market, it looks fantastic. But I think we're looking at spending more money for a smaller street, what do you call them, a street sweeper? Instead of just going over there and, and viewing how we can shave off a little bit where the street sweeper can get in there. It, it looks great, but, but it's awful for bicyclists. And, and we continue doing the same thing and we're going to do it throughout the city and we're going to have the same problem.
Noted. Okay, thank you. All right. All right, with that, we'll question at hand, would any council member like items pulled or considered separately on the consent calendar?
Well, I would, I would like to just make a comment on 345 and 390.
Okay. All right. Andrew, anything from you? Okay, Jose? Okay.
None.
None.
Nothing, okay. Okay, I'll, just for grins, I'll throw my hat in the ring on 390. All right. Okay. For some reason, I was, okay, all right. With that, before we have at it, anybody from the public wish to comment on the consent calendar in, in an aggregate basis?
Thank you. Jose, I'm on to my community. Mayor, my only problem with this consent agenda is that we don't have the information you guys do. I said this before, we need to do this per every item on the agenda separately and be able to comment on every one. You're not allowing us to do that. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you have to be fair. We don't have the information you do. We have four or five sentences, some of them have a paragraph and it doesn't have all the information that we need to know. So that's my comment. I mean, we really can't comment on something we don't have information on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, anyone from the public? Okay, see none. All right. Tony on 345?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to the administrative staff, the department directors. I think I just witnessed something, just by listening to my colleagues, that they don't have any questions. I think during our briefings, Mr. Callahan and Assistant City Manager, when we do have questions during their briefings, it was awesome that we were able to get the answers before the council meeting. A lot of, it saves a lot of time, but I do want to say thank you. You, you answered all of our questions, which was great. I, I just want to make sure that the quality of service for the people that we serve, that we stay consistent on that. Making sure that we are giving a quality service. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. All right, item 390, Tony.
And again, just, we need to go check them out. I, we need to go check them out.
I appreciate that. All right, well, I do, I do see David Jacobs here and I, and I, and I guess I would have a question. I know this is about purchasing materials and, you know, I think, I think all of us have had concerns about the feedback. We, we've had, you know, the difference between a pothole and patching and, you know, and doing some recent, recent work. And then the next day or within a couple of days, it, it seems like there, there's already a problem. So could you, could you just kind of address how you look at that in terms of the nature of the materials we buy? What decisions we make, when we make them, why? And, and, you know, just kind of speak to this perception of poor, poor quality? Because I think all, everybody on the council has, has heard that to one degree or another, so can you help us address that?
Yes, so, so the question comes down to, to quality over quantity. And we have a lot of potholes in the city that need to be filled. And if we went and did every single pothole correctly, the way you're supposed to, and that means cutting out the surface or jackhammering the surface so they're square edges, digging down and making sure you have a, a good sub base, building that back up and laying asphalt and then rolling that, that takes time. And most of the time, we don't have that. We only have five guys that are going out there and filling potholes. And so we do what we call a cold patch. This is asphalt material that stays malleable when it's cold. And when you put it in a hole, you can, you can compact it and it's supposed to stay for up to a year. Obviously, sometimes they pop back out because the, the surrounding asphalt isn't strong enough to keep it in place. So the best way to actually get rid of the potholes is to actually repave the whole street, which is very expensive. So on streets that are completely failing, it's hard to say, let's go out there and patch pothole, put pothole, pothole patch in because it's just going to pop back out. But we continue to get those complaints. So we go ahead and, and try to alleviate some of the problem by putting the pothole patch in, that we don't have to go and do the whole street. Because the street, doing the whole street, we'd have to grind it and then pave over it, which is extremely expensive and extremely time-consuming. So we, we opt to actually try to get as many potholes filled so that there's actually something in there that will hold up for a reasonable amount of time. So at some point in time, we can actually get to resurfacing the roadway.
So questions, because this is fundamentally an on-call purchasing agreement. Is, is there a quali, quality issue that, I, I understand the difference, we're going to do a pothole versus we're going to patch or, or pave. Is, is there any reason for the council or the public to be concerned about the qual, quality of materials that, that we're asking for?
I, I don't believe so. It is, it is, the, the nature of the cold patch is that it doesn't necessarily adhere to the asphalt like hot patch does. When you actually goo a hot patch, it actually melts a, a surrounding asphalt and actually blends in a little bit better and holds up a little bit better. But there's a lot of spots that we can't do that in because two feet away is another failing asphalt spot. And to actually put the kind of effort into pothole patching at that location would just be a waste of time because it's going to appear two feet away when we get to it. We, we do have the mastic machine. We bought that six, eight months ago now, which allows us to do the, the potholes that aren't so deep. And, and we just did that on, on Market Street. You'll see a, a, a sp, patch that's, you know, 30 or 40 feet long that we've gone along and, and patched over a spot. That tends to hold up a little bit better, but it's not good for a deep pothole. That's a, it's a hole, we got to fill it up. And the mastic is only basically goes over the top of a crack or over top of a small hole or a very not-so-deep hole that we can do that on. So, so it's a very limited scope that we can use the mastic on. But we do try to, to fill as many potholes as we can, so you do have a driving surface that you can drill over.
Well, for, you know, for the purposes of this conversation, you know, I, I know there's lots of questions. You know, people are starting to get, they rightly or wrongly very enamored with crack seal. And, and then, you know, there are financial considerations, potholes versus patching and that sort of thing. But you're, you're, you're pretty comfortable with the materials we, regardless of what issues, perceptions that may exist that we're, we certainly need to continue to address with the community. The quality of the materials we're buying, you're fine and, and you know, and I notice the players.
And this is the same material every other city in the state is buying. Most material, it goes by Caltrans standards and most asphalt plants will produce that particular asphalt. So everybody's buying exactly that. Actually, Caltrans actually goes out and tests the different plants to make sure they're living up to their specifications.
So we don't have a Salinas special?
Yeah.
All right, very good. Okay, I believe that's all we have, so is there a motion on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Why don't we go ahead and call for the question?
Councilmember Barajas? Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember DiRigo?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval? Mayor Donahue?
Yep.
Motion passes.
All right. With that, we will proceed to council member reports, appointments and future agenda items. And Andrew, we'll start with you.
Sure, thank you. Well, I got to attend Donuts with Code Enforcement. We had a good community showing. Got a chance to speak to him about CivicTrack, an AI-based program. Somebody I ran into at the League of Cities was, actually one of our residents, Peter, was featured on their presentation. Basically, it's an AI platform that allows us to be a little more proactive with code enforcement. I think it's something the council discussed during budget times. I think we had a good majority of support to at least look at it in the future. I think those events are important. It was not at the most convenient time, but we did get some folks. I think there's those type of events or, or code enforcement partnering with other city events or other community outreach efforts is important. I know I'll be inviting them to some of mine. I think if people got to know a little bit more of what code enforcement did or what resource they could be, it'd be a great thing. Got a chance to attend North Salinas. They had a haunted house. I didn't make it in time for the haunted house, but I did get an amazing baked potato from them. Went to the Ranch of San Juan Fall Festival and got to speak in Ms. Robinson's class. That was a lot of fun. Also, Tamsi and Caltrans is having a community meeting. It's going to be October 29th, which is tomorrow, at the Ad Commissioners from 3:30 to 6:00 PM. I encourage you all to be there. Let's see. And I just want to address what just happened. Man, that was quite an attack from Councilmember Barajas. It was actually very well planned. I, I do want to apologize to the public and to our poor Tamsi staff. I think he badgered a bit. You know, the Rail Policy Committee is an advisory board to the, to the board and I have no excuse for missing some of those meetings. I've done my best to coordinate our council member briefings, which used to happen at the same time, so I've moved it. Couple of times I've reached out to Councilmember DiRigo last minute when I couldn't make them. Unfortunately, we try to attend those as best as I can and I'll just be a little more proactive when I can attend. But man, poor Tamsi staff, I apologize for that. I think I always welcome conversations with Councilmember Barajas. I anticipate that this Tamsi issue is probably not about what you may think, so stay tuned on that. But hopefully, Councilmember Barajas and I will be able to have a sit-down conversation. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes, I think tomorrow in the same room, we're having Strengthen Neighborhoods meeting. Does anybody know about that? What's the name of it?
Building Strong Neighborhoods?
Thank you, I like that. And that's at 6 o'clock here in this room. Thank you. So you're all invited? You, you know what, I want to, Mayor, I want to address Mr. Saunders' concern because I, I think he shares all of our frustration. I believe we're all frustrated. This is a serious issue. You have different governments involved, whether it's Caltrans, whether it's mental health, whether it's city. And we all do this. It's not our responsibility. But we have to come up with some kind of solution, which is going to be very difficult. Because I will be very honest with you, I've walked, tried to encourage several of our unhoused community. Sometimes it is scary. But I would venture to say about 75%, they just want to be left alone and, to your point, they want to do drugs and they don't want structure. They don't want to bid at the Victory Mission because they have to pray and they have to take a shower and do whatever. They don't want that. 75% of the unhoused population, I'm going to venture to say that, because I've walked neighborhoods. I'll be honest with you, I've gone into man-made caves and probably Mr. Lorenzo is aware of these. There's families that live underground. It's, it's crazy, but it, it's true. It's frustrating and it breaks my heart every time somebody gets run over by that train. I think the last individual, they said he went head-on towards the train. Imagine that. So Mayor, I, I know we're going to be talking about, we have a housing, what is it, summit?
Housing Summit, yes.
It's coming up. Maybe that's part of that conversation. But we're dealing with a very serious issue with the unhoused population. And you know what's happening at Chinatown, if I may, I know I have a couple of minutes? There's actually young men in their small bicycles with walkie-talkies. They charge rent to the unhoused. Whoever gets a social security check pays rent for there. I've seen it. I witnessed it. I've even been told to get out of there. It's scary. Within that dangerous zone, there's another market. And, and there's actually people that keep an eye for the police, keep an eye for people like Lorenzo, keep an eye for people that are in authority. And they charge rent. And that's happening in front of our, in front of us. So Mr. Saunders, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention because it is a serious issue. And I think we're all frustrated. To that, MST is doing wonderful, Monterey Salinas Transit. If you look at the website, I attend every meeting. And MST is doing very well. Just one last thought, Mr. Mayor, did you know that any bus that you see on MST, if there's a child, if there's a person that's in danger, they can run to the bus and the drivers are trained to deal with issues like that. Can you imagine that? You're in danger and you see a bus, you can run towards that bus and that driver will know it's a safe place. Isn't that awesome? It's not just a bus, but it's a safe place for somebody that's in danger. And, and I'm going to ask the Assistant City Manager, we have a property over here at 106 Lincoln Avenue. I, I think Lorenzo's going to go look at it and give us a citation. It, it looks awful. And, and you know what, the business neighbor there, look at his yard, he keeps it nice and. The business neighbor there, look at his yard, he keeps it nice and clean for his customers, but Mr. Lorenzo, you need to go cite 106 Lincoln Avenue, because it looks terrible. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Jose?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I want to talk about something that I really wish I didn't have to. But leadership isn't just about celebrating our successes. It's also about having the courage to address what's not working. And what's not working, Councilmember Andrew Sandoval, is the way your conduct off this dais on social media and other public bodies and in other communities has reflected on the city of Salinas. We all ran for office to serve, to make our city stronger, to bring people together to build a better future. And we all know that disagreement is a part of democracy. But what we've seen from you on social media, in public meetings, and through your actions with other agencies, has repeatedly crossed the line from disagreement to dysfunction. Your actions build a pattern, one of hostility, of unnecessary conflict, and of personal attacks that have extended far beyond healthy disagreement. You filed FPPC complaints and Public Records Act requests, not only against your fellow city councilmembers on this dais, but also against other elected officials in other cities and other counties, against leaders of other educational institutions, of college foundations, of private citizens, and agencies throughout the region, including the city of Salinas, claiming it's in the name of justice. But justice without discernment quickly turns into disruption. Every one of those filings takes time. The time of staff who could be helping families find housing, process permits for small businesses, fixing streets, serving our residents. Instead, they're forced to divert their energy toward responding towards his grievances. So I have to ask, when those complaints target your own city, your fellow city councilmembers, your regional partners, what are you hoping to achieve? Because from where I sit, it's not accountability that's being advanced, it's division, and your actions don't build trust, they erode it. And there are real-world consequences to that erosion of trust. You said recently at a city council meeting that you were frustrated that your funding request was the only one denied at the transportation agency from Monterey County. And I understand your frustration, but I also can't ignore the bigger picture, that the relationships we've built with our partners across the region are strained because of the tone and tactics you've chosen. Now, I can't say for certain why that decision was made, but I can say this. When you go around the region attacking elected officials, filing complaints against partner agencies, and creating conflict where there should be collaboration, it damages our credibility. It makes it harder for Salinas to earn the trust, the respect, and the cooperation of other cities and the county on regional issues. Salinas is the largest city in the tri-county area, and even with the weighted vote on Tamsi, you've damaged relationships and cannot secure votes on these regional bodies, rendering you an ineffective representative. And when Salinas loses out on a million dollars in funding because of damaged trust, damaged relationships, that's no longer a personal issue. When that happens, the city of Salinas, not just you, pays the price. And that's not just unfortunate, that's unacceptable. The same goes for your conduct on social media. You have repeatedly taken city matters, issues that should be addressed on this dais, and use them as content for online taunts, insults, and personal attacks. Recently, you went so far as to create your own Facebook group, quote-unquote, Salinas Crime Watchouts. In its About section, you mock and ridicule other community watch pages with clown emojis and a long list of grievances. You derive those groups as dictators and as guardians of the status quo, and even celebrate being banned from them as if it were some kind of badge of honor. So again, I have to ask, how does this help anyone? How does mocking Salinas residents, people who are genuinely concerned about neighborhood safety, serve this community? And it's not just about social media groups. You also filed a formal FPPC complaint against a private citizen, Ms. Audrey Wardwell, someone who is not an elected or appointed official, but simply a citizen expressing her opinions about government. She has the right to do that. That's the essence of democracy. Targeting a private citizen because she criticized you is not just inappropriate, it's dangerous. You later issued a public apology, but a public apology doesn't erase the harm or the message that it sends, that disagreeing with an elected official might come with personal consequences. That's not how public service works. And yet, this pattern continues. In recent weeks, you posted about what you called the, quote, "potato gate," echoing conspiracy theories around an ongoing petition investigation, one that's actually being handled appropriately by the district attorney's office. The difference, Councilmember Sandoval, is that when the DA's office investigates, they are doing their job under the law. They have the authority to make inquiries and gather facts. When you were served with recall papers last Halloween, you and some of your supporters reportedly went door-to-door demanding to know why people signed the petition to recall you, not as investigators, but as subjects of that recall. That's intimidation, plain and simple. So to now act as though you care about the integrity of petition processes, when you once sought to silence your own critics by showing up at their homes, it's not accountability, it's hypocrisy. And recently, you made a video saying that you are not afraid of being censored, that the only, that only the people of District Five can remove you, and that's 100% true. But your behavior after the recall effort and your actions toward private citizens show that you are willing to use your position to go after people when they disagree with you. That's not the kind of representation the residents of North Salinas and District Five deserve. And it's part of a broader troubling pattern, one that mirrors behaviors we've seen on the national stage. Because what happens when certain leaders are criticized? They retaliate. They post about their critics. They mock them online. They taunt them publicly. They call them names. They frame themselves as victims of witch hunts or for speaking their truth. And when social media platforms or communities hold them accountable, they simply create their own echo chambers, designed to control the narrative rather than engage in dialogue. This isn't courage. It's not transparency. It's not leadership. It's the same brand of chaos that tears trust apart and makes everything about the person instead of the people. As city councilmember, you are expected to uphold a higher standard to model civility, respect, and integrity even when you disagree. But your social media becomes a running commentary of anger and accusation. When post after post targets your fellow city councilmembers, our mayor, other elected officials, and our regional partners, in everything ranging from healthcare to higher education, it becomes a spectacle, not public service. This behavior is not just unbecoming of an elected official, it's reckless. Because when you post about city business and challenge your fellow city councilmembers to engage, even with a simple "like" or comment, you risk violating the Brown Act. You know this, you are at the same training as we were. And you expose the city of Salinas, your own city, to potential litigation and liability. You know that we can't respond to your Facebook posts. You know we need to have those conversations in a public meeting compliant with the law. Again, that's not leadership, that's recklessness. No one sitting up here proverbially fears you. But what everyone up here does fear is that erosion of trust in local government that comes from this kind of behavior, that kind that turns serious work into political theory. If a teenager acted the way you do online, the taunting, the name-calling, the personal attacks, we'd call it bullying. If a 10-year-old acted this way, it would not go unaddressed. Yet here I am, the youngest city councilmember on this dais, having to ask a grown man, an elected official, to show the same restraint that we expect from children. You often speak about collaboration, about unity, and all the branches. But collaboration requires trust, and trust can't exist when you keep breaking it. When you placed yourself for appointment on the Executive Committee of the Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority earlier this year without first consulting your fellow city councilmembers, Councilmember Delarosa and myself, even when you were told and expected to do so by the agency, that was not collaboration. That was self-interest, and yet you still want to talk about wanting to work together. And it's part of a larger pattern with your actions and behavior, one that continues to prioritize personal battles over actual public service. If you have disagreements with us, your fellow elected city councilmembers, there's actually an appropriate place to have those discussions and disagreements. It's right here, on this dais, in a meeting that's open, that's public, that's agendaized, that's recorded and accessible to every resident in this city. This is where governance happens. This is where leadership happens. This is where accountability happens, not on Facebook, not on Instagram, not on TikTok, right here in this chamber in front of the people that we serve. Imagine what could happen if you put as much effort into solving problems as you do into posting about them. Imagine what progress we could make if the same drive for attention was directed towards results. We are at a point in this city where we're finally seeing momentum, progress on housing, investment in small businesses, attention to economic development, and renewed collaboration with our regional partners. But every time we get pulled back into personal disputes and public spectacles, that progress stalls. So I'm asking you to pause, to think before posting, before filing, before acting. Ask yourself, is this helping the residents of District Five in North Salinas? Is this moving Salinas forward? Because right now, your behavior isn't helping. It's hurting. It's hurting our city. It's hurting our reputation. It's hurting our collective ability to get things done. Right now, not only North Salinas residents in District Five, but all Salinas residents throughout the city, the people who sent every single one of us here to do this work, need us to help them, not fight each other. You can do better. District Five deserves better. North Salinas deserves better. Salinas deserves better. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right. Margaret?
Well, I would like to first say that, Jose, I'm very proud of you. You're very brave and courageous, and I appreciate your words tonight, more than you can imagine. My heart is beating so fast right now because I've felt the same stress and anxiety that you felt since we joined this team in January. And it is affecting our mental health and our physical health, and it's not right, and it's not fair, and it needs to stop. I do remember one time, Mr. Sandoval, when you did contact me about a missed meeting for Tamsi. I think it was the day before, the morning of, and I could not attend. And I did respond to that. That was the only one time that I got a call that you were not able to participate. And if I'm wrong, make sure you correct me on that, but I only remember the one time. I do try to be a good alternate, and I try to attend as often as I can. I also attend Tamsi as a, just a public servant. I like to listen into what's going on. I like to hear about the rail extension because I'm passionate about that. So I do attend a lot of those meetings, even though it's not required, it's just for my own personal interest. I think you summed it up really well, Jose, I don't know how to say it any better. The bullying has to stop. This is not a good environment for our city. It's not good for any of us sitting up here, and we certainly don't deserve it. You know, we're here to represent our residents, and we care about everybody that lives in the city, regardless of what district they're in. So I want to support you on your efforts. And I'd also like to, and I'm not sure if this is appropriate, I'll ask our city attorney if I, if I can call for censure of Mr. Sandoval by our city attorney and his team.
Councilmember DeRigo, it would be appropriate to do so under your rules of decorum. You would just need the support of at least one other councilmember to do so.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate the qualification for that. I think that's it. I want to end on a positive note. I want to say thank you to Mr. Saunders for being here. You, you care about our downtown, and I really appreciate how much you care about our population here and the work that you've done. And you're a great business owner and a great friend, so thank you for being here tonight along with all the rest of you. And I'm sorry that you all had to witness this, but it's really important that we had to, we had to bring it out. It's been a long time coming. I also want to say Holiday Parade Lights is coming, the Sunday after Thanksgiving. Plans are well on the way. We're going to have a huge presentation. It's going to be really fun, so I want you to share it with all your friends and make sure you come out and support us on that, that evening. And last but not least, thank you, our Assistant City Manager, for being here tonight, Lisa Murphy. And I did attend the MBEP conference, that's the only thing I'm going to bring up tonight as far as what I've done recently, but it was very well-attended, and I really appreciate the city sponsoring me to attend that event. I think it's really important that we talk about, you know, big, big-picture items in our city. I'm also going to be attending the Housing Summit, and thank you, Mayor, for taking the leadership role on that. It's really important that we talk about these difficult issues, housing, lack of housing, lack of affordable housing, and the homeless. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Gloria?
Councilmember Sandoval, I could probably be your grandmother. And I'm asking you now, please stop bullying me on social media. You are hurting not only me, but you're hurting my children. Stop it now, please. And let's go on with the work that we have to do in the city of Salinas. We have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of issues. We won a fair election. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Gloria. Aurelio?
And can I please?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Can I meet my, or are you going to come back so we can do our?
No, we're finishing up, so.
Oh, finishing up? Well, I attended a lot of, a lot of events. But I want to say, and I know Yolanda got really emotional about Gavilan Creek. We really need to address the citizens, you know, and give them a response. I just didn't feel comfortable getting, seeing her getting really emotional about the Gavilan Creek. We need to do something about that. And yes, Mr. Saunders, thank you, but we do have a problem with the homelessness, and we need to solve it. We need to house them. And I know Lisa Britton is here. Councilmember Barrera just had a meeting, and I think I heard that the motel, they're getting ready to open up a motel, okay? So hopefully, the residents that are out there wandering around will have first dibs on that. I'm hoping for that. But, but then, it's the housing authority that's going to take care of that. We found that out at your meeting. So if they're not on the list, they're not going to get housed. That's the reality. But believe me, as a representative of Chinatown, we need to redevelop Chinatown, and the only way we can do it is not moving them out, pushing them out. We got to house them. We have to find housing for them. And the agencies have to do all those wraparound services that these residents need, because a lot of them, drug use, mental health issues. So I know everybody's frustrated, but Lisa, you're working on it, correct? We're working on it. That's all I can tell you. And thank you for going out there and doing what you do. We love you for that. But, okay, I'm going to go on. I attended the Community Human Service Board, and we're looking for our CEO because Robin is leaving. And so I attended the Solid Waste meeting on the 18th. We had a special meeting yesterday. Councilmember Sandoval attended, and I, on that special meeting yesterday, looking again for a CEO for, to replace Patrick Matthews. Let's see, I attended the code enforcement, and I want to thank, I want to thank Lorenzo, your staff. Again, we learn from it. Is it the right timing? You know, residents didn't come out, they have to work. Okay. So I attended the one Cesar Chavez Park. I attended the one Eldorado Park because Councilmember Salazar was busy doing something else in his district, so I went. And again, thank you. The other one, I attended the Halloween events. Thank you, Kristen, Vivian, Anna. Boy, what a wonderful job you guys did at Cesar Chavez Park. We had a lot of people out there, a lot of kids. Also Sherwood this past Saturday. It was amazing, and I know the mayor showed up too. So those two. Again, Los Padres School, Councilmember Barrera, that was a very good meeting, and we have to do something about that creek and that pathway, right? They're holding you, I'll back you up on that. Yeah, we need to clean that creek up. Okay, so that. And then, let's see, this, this Thursday at the Filipino Hall on Caia Savu, we're having a meeting, a collaboration between community development and eco-housing, and I'm hosting it. And it starts at 5:30 on tenant rights and landlord. So I invite the public to attend at 5:30. And also Tricatrunk, the car clubs, Victor, Cervantes, and all of them, they're having something at Sherwood Park, so the kids could start, I think, at 5:00. And let's see, what else is coming up? Yeah, well, a lot of activities, and I- And I ask everybody, be safe out there with your kids, please. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Aurelio.
Yeah, just like to share, on Friday, October 17th, I had the opportunity to attend the Everett Alvarez High School, their first Everett Homecoming Parade. I'd like to thank Principal Miguel Ocampo for extending the invitation. For those of you who had missed it, it consisted of several homecoming floats. They were great. High school bands, cheerleaders, and little writers. It was a really, really great event to see happen and hope to see it again next year. Also on Saturday, October 18th, I was also able to meet with about 40 to 50 residents from the Creek Bridge neighborhood to talk about Candy Cane Lane. I'd like to thank our mayor, Dennis Donahue, for also attending. Based on the input that we received from the residents, I'll be reaching out to the city manager's office to address some of their concerns. And I think we've all seen what some of the residents do over in the Creek Bridge neighborhood. They've really turned it into a very festive neighborhood event. It's reached the point where it's very difficult to walk on our city sidewalks. And so I want to see how we can partner with them and bring all that Christmas joy to the rest of our residents. Also, on Tuesday, October 21st, attended our regular Housing and Land Use Committee meeting. Also this last weekend, on Saturday, October 25th, attended the Downtown Trick or Treat. And I still call it Old Town Salinas. I know we call it the city center. I know we call it Main Street. I want to thank all those businesses that were out there handing out candy to all the children. Again, really great event. People flooding our city streets. When I think back to COVID and what life was like back then and wondering if we would ever see our city streets as vibrant as they were. I mean, this is what we wanted, and so very heartwarming to see. I do want to bring up Gavilan Creek. You know, I will also concur that our watershed, our local watershed, is under attack. Not just Gavilan Creek, but other creeks here in the city of Salinas. What's going on is we do have a number of people that are living in the creek. It is very dangerous for them. As you know, towards the end of December, January, we get very heavy rains. And within hours, the creek fills up to like five or six feet. Last thing that I would want to see, or anyone would want to see, is the loss of human life. I know that we've already gone through our budget process for this year, but would like to see or hear from the city manager in terms of what would it cost, what the actual real costs are to clean up and protect our local watershed. Again, I'd like a report back in terms of what we can realistically do and develop a budget. Which brings up the question regarding funding and where funding would come from if we're not able to address this issue this fiscal year. I understand if we have to take this on during our next fiscal year. Like to make sure that our city manager, or I'd like to request our city manager, meet with stakeholders. And by stakeholders, I specifically mean the homeless community, our homeless advocates, our county, state, and federal agencies. And also develop a plan in terms of advocating for funding and identifying additional resources. I also, lastly, wanted to send my condolences to the family, friends, students, and colleagues of former mayor of the city of Watsonville, Manuel Bersamin, who recently passed away. For those of you that don't know, he was the first Filipino-American to be elected as mayor in the city of Watsonville. We had the privilege of having him here in the city of Salinas, where he was the Hartnell Community College Director of their trio programs, having a real impact on hundreds, if not thousands, students here in the city of Salinas and throughout Monterey County. Also, I want to thank Councilmember Barajas for bringing up a very sensitive issue that's been going on with this council. I really wasn't prepared to make comments on it, but I do share his frustrations. One of the big questions that I have for Councilmember Sandoval is, are you okay? That's the answer that we want to know. Are you okay? Second, for those of you who might be watching on YouTube or Facebook, you know, I find it highly unprofessional that while Councilmember Barajas was making his comment, which required a lot of strength and bravery, that Councilmember Sandoval sat there staring him down as if he wanted to get into a street fight. This is the harassment that we continue to receive, both in person and on social media. Councilmember Sandoval is entitled to his opinion, whether we like it or not. And I concur with my fellow council members in requesting a censor, which he has already says means nothing. I have a request of Councilmember Sandoval that this week, because we all know that you continue to produce hit pieces, political hit pieces on social media. It's always a different order, but we never miss the rotation. One video tomorrow may be, well, it'll probably be on Councilmember Barajas. The next day, the mayor. The day after that, Councilwoman de la Rosa. The day after that, Councilmember DeRigo. I get lucky. I get picked like Fridays and Saturdays. I mean, you got a lot of time on your hands. If you focused your time on being a real city leader, the city of Salinas would be a very better place. This high school mentality has no place in our council chambers. This high school mentality, if we were high school students, students would be calling you an internet troll. To stop trolling. As a former psychology major, these narcissistic tendencies have no place in government. It's called gaslighting. These so-called conspiracy theory that you have about quote-unquote transparency and accountability, under your definition, doesn't speak to the council or this city. You need to stop taking things out of content. We already know, those of us here, we know that you're going to take what Jose, Luis Barajas said, you're going to cut and piece it together and spin the narrative. And again, as a former psychology major, play the victim role when you're wasting our valuable time, where you're wasting this city's valuable time. Just to give you an example, it's not just the city either. It's at the state level with the Fair Political Practice Commission. I'm a new council member here, but I'm no stranger to politics. This year alone, I believe I've had three Fair Political Practice complaints all submitted by Councilmember Andrew Sandoval. I didn't even know that he had submitted them because he doesn't even have the courage to say it to my face. But he produces these videos on social media, and then he tries to use our government and our government agencies to advance his own political agendas and biases. And you know what the Fair Political Practice Commission said after doing their three investigations on me? No findings. No findings. We will not investigate this further. And I am not the only elected official on this city council that have received similar letters stating, no findings. We will not research this further. Which means we're not wasting our time on your frivolous FPPC complaints. And it's not just here that he's done it. It's been with other municipalities in the county of Monterey and the county of San Benito. The five of us won fair and square. The whole narrative that we were bought, no. This community invested in us and wanted to see a change. And they got the five of us to sit on this council. My time is very limited. It's very precious. The time and commitment that I make to this city council, to the development of a better city, is very precious. And I don't have time for childish antics. But yet, it takes up my time when people in this community call and say, did you see Andrew's video? Don't care what he says. Don't care what he thinks. It's all a bunch of half-truths, half-lies. His videos only get like 400 views. It's probably Councilmember Sandoval probably playing his own videos over and over and over again. So he gets more likes. The only one that's reached significant numbers is probably the Dutch Brothers, right? But that's probably because people wanted to see Dutch Brothers. This weekend, jump on Facebook, we're all going to get attacked. Andrew's going to play the victim, that he's only trying to help, that he's seeking transparency and accountability. This is what this council is about. Some of us have 20, 30 years of political history here, doing real work, conducting, performing real community change compared to Sandoval's five or six years as a former school board member and council member, making up frivolous claims. We have a homeless community that needs our attention. We have an housing issue that needs to be addressed. We have a city infrastructure to take care of. We have a budget to make sure that is being used to its maximum potential. We have public safety issues that we deal with, that we worry about as council members every night and don't have the time, not wasting my time. And to watch this all play out on social media, this is the mental health crisis that people are talking about. The city of Salinas elected the five of us for change. Councilmember Sandoval, you need to decide whether or not you want your council, district, voters to bring you back. You have nothing to prove to me? The only question here that needs to be answered tonight is, are you okay? Are you okay?
All right, thank you. All right. A couple things. I am going, just because I do, I want to make the point, and then I'll address kind of a little bit of what's been said. Though I will start out, before I walked into council, I got a packet of letters from Laurelwood School. You know, and they were kind of the cute letters that it's like, this is kind of why I like being the mayor. And I went through them. And you know what the toughest request of all was? Though now I'm inclined to think, you know, based on everything we've been talking about, maybe it's a little easier than I thought. There's a direct ask to the mayor of Salinas, can I lower the price of video games? So I will see what I can do about that. And to some degree, maybe that's what I'd rather work on for the moment. But there were some serious things said this evening. And so before I just kind of weigh in a little bit about that, we should always remember in this community, a lot of really terrific things are going on. You know, we observed the 25th anniversary of Rancho Cielo. You know, that on Saturday, over 500 people were out at the ranch. You know, it's truly, you know, a nationally renowned program that certainly brought the entire region together. Worth noting. Thursday night, there were a lot of terrific activities in the city. It was very difficult to choose where to be. So I chose to go to the Boys and Girls Club in Seaside for the youth of the year. And it wasn't Seaside versus Salinas, but Salinas won. And so there's a terrific young lady out of the Boys and Girls Club, and we need to, and we certainly want to recognize her. And then, as Gloria said, and we've all participated, you know, just it's nice to see the community organized. Apparently, the community likes Halloween. And so there was certainly a lot of activities. And I did have an opportunity to speak about, after the MBEP conference, I was asked to talk about what's going on in Salinas and the future of Salinas. And I think that's kind of the segue. This is a city with enormous opportunities. And we're going to grow. We do have opportunities, but we do have serious challenges that I believe we're up for. And that really is where our focus needs to be and should be. A couple of them we've heard tonight. You know, the Housing Summit on November 5th is really part of a series of housing events and conversations that will take place throughout the month of November. We're bringing in a nationally renowned group of players to help set the big picture on housing in California, what the issues are. Joel Cocteau is somebody who did work for the city with, when I was the mayor the first time, internationally renowned. And so he'll be kind of the headliner with a group of folks that he's used to working with. And we're delighted that right now Speaker Rivas has agreed to be our lunchtime speaker. And then in the afternoon, be very zeroed in on where are we in Salinas? A couple days, and then the next two days over at Silimar, there'll be a conversation somewhat semi, it's more by invitation, but the idea is kind of a regional action plan on looking at affordable housing. And then later in the month, there'll be a group coming in from strong towns talking about design to build for affordability. And I think it's appropriate, and I have begun some conversations. I think we do want to throw in, I've got to worry about the timing and how we fit it in, but I think we do want to have a conversation about the housing situation and homelessness. So those conversations, we want to build a little bit, I think, on the momentum from Jill Allen's film at Sherwood. You know, that topic really turned out a nice crowd. And typically, when in this community, when there's been that type of focus on homelessness, there's strong interest across the board and a little bit more of the broader community. And so I think that's important. So we'll get that worked into the conversation. The thing I would say, you know, Frank brought it up, and Yolanda brought it up, and by the the way, just for the record, the mayor has not had any meetings on that situation and said it's not our responsibility. That didn't occur. Aurelio and I certainly have had some conversations about, you know, how can we look at that situation more specifically? And, you know, Frank, what I would tell you is, you know, a lot of funding is getting ready to go away, and we're trying to, as much as possible, we know there are certain things we can do as a city, but there are other things we're going to have to do as a community. And so we're looking at that and trying to have a ready, aim, fire approach to it, because just past is not prologue on this homeless deal. When the amount of funding that's getting ready to disappear out of the homeless equation in terms of ability to provide services, as has been the case over the last couple of years, whether it's the city or the county, we're going to have to look for some new ways forward. But I certainly can assure the entire community that no one's sitting here going, oh, well, gee, it's tough, we lost the money. There is serious thought, and, you know, let tonight be a reminder that we need to have a sense of urgency about that. So just, we certainly heard those voices. I will just close by, it took a lot of courage to do what Jose did, and I think, you know, you've heard the comments from the dais. You know, I'm always confident Salinas will come together and find a way forward. So it's... I always appreciate, you know, your prayers for the city. And so let's pray that we find a way forward. And hopefully, this will be a positive moment, a chance to pivot. And so, but I do want to congratulate... I'm not sure congratulates the right word, but Jose, I appreciate that took a lot of courage to do what you did, and so I certainly respect that. And I want to, I know that's been a source of frustration on an ongoing basis, and so I'll thank you for addressing, you know, what's been an elephant in the room, on social media, wherever one finds elephants, there's been an elephant running around. So, and so I think... An opportunity to respond? Hold on. We're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. There's been a call for a censure, so that'll be an opportunity for you to respond at that time. With that, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.